Good evening. This is Kristy Bruce.
Let's see. The Chair of the Transportation Committee is Catherine Nakai.
Yes.
Yeah, and right. Just wanted to make sure you knew.
What we shall do is bring this to order. This is Woodland Park Planning Commission Agenda, 5:30 PM on August 26th. This is a work session. Okay, and it's three different topics, well, many topics, divided into three categories. In vision would park 2:30, chapter review and the items there. Then we'll go into future land use map discussion and then citizens' presentation regarding short-term rentals. Okay, and with that, Chairman Catherine Nakai and her scribe, and I don't know his name, you might want to introduce him.
I'm Jim Ramsey.
Jim Ramsey. She will be take the first leg.
Okay, I'll do that. I like that better.
Figure out.
What would you like to know?
Everything you know.
So we can walk through your chapter. And then if there are any questions, your committee can answer them or chime in.
Okay, perfect.
I thought I had the draft ready to share here, but I need to load it back up just a moment.
I guess before we get started, what I'd like to do is make a statement and also ask a question of you guys. And the statement is, thank you very much. We certainly, on behalf of the planning commission and myself, we appreciate everything all the subgroups have done so far. We're at a very pivotal point in the plan, comprehensive plan process. And looking at the information that we have before us, you have done a good, very good job. So we really do appreciate that. It's going to help us do our next step and our responsibilities to prepare this for the community and for city council as well. Question I have is, as you prepare this, you've spent a lot of time working on this particular chapter as everybody else has. One of our responsibilities is try to be consistent between various chapters. And we just asked that you accept our responsibility as a planning commission to go ahead and modify, change the reports that you have us and just give us your blessing to do that. And we ask for that.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
And Laura, I'm sharing my screen, but it's not showing on the main screen. Do we know why? See it? This worked like a charm the last two times.
Sally, I see it fine.
Ah, so it's being broadcast, Laura. It's just not showing on our TVs.
Sally, are you going to start off with the book, Transportation in Drainage 11, and go through that?
Yes.
Until she gets that up, we might start doing that.
With everybody.
Okay, you'd have heard us.
Okay. Um. So I'm going to try to just make sure, there we go. So the transportation section has a vision statement that is create a safe, accessible and efficient transportation system which accommodates automotive vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles and micro mobility, which you may need to explain micro mobility for us, and reduce through traffic from our downtown area, provide a safe and efficient drainage system which protects our property, facilities and environment. So that is the lead-in. And then in the background, the transportation introduction or background.
Sally, I have just a question about the vision statement. The second half reduces traffic through our downtown area. I guess that refers to a potential reliever road if one's, if at such time as one's put in place. Absent being a reliever route, I would think the transportation would desire to remain, keep the traffic on 24 and not create a situation where people wanted to find alternate routes through the residential areas to avoid, to avoid the main highway. So it.
This committee does have a strong focus toward a reliever route. And I believe that phrase was to reflect that, but we'll confirm that with the chairman.
That is correct.
It is. Does it need, does it need some clarification? I don't want to belabor the point of others think it, think it doesn't, that's, that's fine. It's and, and an advancement towards a reliever route that will reduce through traffic through our downtown, something of the sort. But absent that, it's really, it's the, it's a bad idea to drive traffic off the main route.
I like your idea, Lee. And let's go ahead and change that, modify that to reduce this through traffic from our downtown area through the utilization of a future reliever route.
Well, I imagine they were trying to stay away from the reliever route terminology. Is that so, Catherine?
Pretty much. I mean, we were trying to make it as, I don't, you know, at this point, he friendly, yeah, yeah, it's for the better, for better lack of word, yeah.
Isn't the reliever route a kind of word for bypass?
It is. It's a slightly better word for bypass.
That is driving cars off the road.
Yeah.
That's what it's supposed to do.
That's what it's supposed to do, yes. And that seemed to be the, the most, in the surveys, that's what everybody pretty much wants is to get the bypass slash reliever route going. So that's kind of how we geared this.
And I certainly like. The vision, is there anything wrong with putting it, with making that, including that in the vision?
No, I don't think so. I liked your, I honestly liked your comment.
We're changing this.
Yeah. Via.
So reduce through traffic from our downtown via a reliever route?
Something like that.
Or using a reliever route, yeah.
Using, using.
As you see, that's really not true. We want people to stop and use this space. We have semis. We have all kinds of vehicles that have no intention of stop commercial.
So you got to be careful. I think, John, the point was it reduces through traffic, doesn't this, it's, is what they're trying to avoid.
Correct.
But through traffic implies because it shows they're not stopping and staying is the definition. But they certainly do stop and spend money on their way through.
Excuse me, John, if you can pull your microphone closer for us, please. Thanks. Well, and of course, this plan is more about planning and constructing a reliever route in the future. We know it probably won't happen in the next 10 years, but it's in the aspiration, the vision, so.
When this whole project started, and we go back to 2001, and that's when I first got involved with it. Some of the things that the engineers at that time, especially through Dave Butterby's group, were that bypasses don't work until you get about 13,000 people. Because if you do that and there's not enough business within the community to sustain itself, you become a plague. You become some of the towns that have gone that route and, and all right. So we got to be careful what we do. It's got to be blended in. It's all got to be synced together, so we don't do that. And that's just, and this is going to take a while to do. I mean, we can wordsmith this all we want to.
Yeah, and why don't we go through the goals and objectives and come back to this? And then you'll be able to decide which verb we should use there, how it goes. So where, I did not have any major issues with the background. There's just a couple of typos that will fix the hyphen in department. Was the main one I saw.
I'm going to introduce this now, but we can talk about it later, too. I think we do, we have one sentence in the background section talking about the reliever route. Just one sentence, section. In my, my personal opinion, is this is a very important decision this community has to make. And I think we need to start making a decision. So I think we need a little bit more background on the reliever route. How the reliever route has actually been formulated up to this point. What was the background? What are the, some of the things we need to be concerned about as far as, as we expand? What kind of traffic warrants, historical background, so on and so forth. So we needed a little background in the background section about the reliever route, another paragraph.
I think that's an important point. This is the one sentence.
Yes.
So if Christie, you can make a note that we're going to provide a little bit more background information on the reliever route.
And I think it's also important to have a paragraph on Highway 67. Its role and function in our community is certainly secondary to 24, but it is very important to us.
I think that's a good point as well. And moving on to this map, Christie and I talked about replacing this map with the road classifications in the city so that we will be identifying our arterials, the collector streets, major, minor, all of those that comply with the federal classifications. And this was just updated and is going to be approved through Pike's Peak Regional, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments.
We talked about that yesterday.
Yes, so the city has requested adopting this new scheme of class, they're called functional classifications. And there are federal guidelines that only certain percentage of roads can be included in those classifications. But the importance of it, not only from a planning and traffic standpoint, but it then allows the city to qualify for federal grants to do improvements to any of those functionally classified roads. So even though, I mean, this map was more about the trips, average daily trips in the city, we will not lose that data. Christie is going to put a table in this chapter that will capture those trips and future growths.
Do, do you also need to put that this is a transportation and drainage or use? Because the drainage information is down at the bottom of this map. Will that still be in the new map?
Yes.
Christie, yeah.
So maybe. Or you could have two maps, one is for specifically for drainage and the other one for road classifications. It wouldn't be as confusing.
Christie, what do you think?
Yeah, we could. In the background, we talk a little bit about how they work together and how the drainage systems, you know, interact with the highway and that there's several culverts all throughout the city trying to maintain that positive hydrology, you know, going in the right direction and not causing issues and how that interacts with transportation. So I'm happy to put them on separate maps, though, if it becomes too busy.
That sounds good, Christie, and not just several culverts. We have over 1,500 culverts in the city. And Christie, we can send you our drainage map, which also includes the detention ponds on it, which are very key. I think there's many, 32 detention ponds. Some of those are public, others are private. If they're in a residential, single-family area, they're maintained by the city. If they are in multifamily or commercial areas, those are maintained by the private property owner. And then in the narrative, it also mentions, let's see, after this map, this narrative that talks about the drainage. It mentions that when Woodland Park reaches 10,000 in population, then we must create an MS4 system. This is a municipal separate storm sewer system. And we're ahead of the curve with meeting these federal requirements based on our growth and population.
Should that be actually a new action, too, under 1.1.6 perhaps?
In the drainage goal, I think you're right in preparing for the MS4 requirements.
What does the city currently use for drainage criteria?
What do we use?
Yes.
We just updated our drainage criteria manual in 2014. And for detention specifically, you are required to detain 100-year storm, the five-year storm and 75% of the two-year storm. So it's an accumulative aggregate volume. And the detention is based on releasing that additional storm water at historic rates. So it, they're all engineered to make sure that the new development, the impervious surface is held back in the detention pond and then released at that green field or undeveloped historic rate. So, so, yeah, and actually those criteria are more than what the federal requirement or state requirement is, which is just detaining the 100-year storm. So we add the five-year storm and the, a portion of the two-year. So let's, let's go into the goals and objectives. First goal is promote a multimodal transportation network to include a Highway 24 reliever route that facilitates safe and efficient movement through the community. And then one objective, first objective is basically studying or understanding the travel patterns in and around, which include collecting motor vehicle traffic counts and data, doing a community survey so that we understand our community's preferences, utilize the GIS or geographic information system as a basis for asset management system, and then estimating the cost of each transportation drain and drainage action. That's really more like a capital improvement plan that I know the city engineer, previous city engineer was working on pretty hard. So our new engineer will take over that. Objective number two.
Let's go back up to 1.1.4, one we were just talking about.
Okay.
I'll be very blunt with my fellow planning commission members, but I'm not for that particular action at all. We don't have that kind of action item in any of our other sub, sub or other chapters. It's, I think it's really far-reaching at this point when we're talking about an aspirational document dictating and calling out for costs of specific projects and even given parameters. So I would recommend that we just completely strike that particular action.
Which one?
1.1.4.
Yeah.
So this one.
I could go along with that.
If we wanted to replace.
What about Catherine and the committee?
Well, wonder about replacing it with. Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, that would be totally a great idea.
Both of us.
Okay. You okay with that?
We just didn't want to put something, you know, that, that was heavy-handed, that said you have to, to fund it. So we were kind of doing the estimate idea.
And we don't have that anywhere else, Catherine. Throughout the documents.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, just to make sure I understand, the replacement would be develop a capital improvement project list to accomplish features identified in this chapter? Or do we want to leave out this, this chapter being included in, in the capital improvement project?
I'd keep it as general as possible, Christie, and just acknowledge that a develop and adopt a CIP related to drainage and, and transportation.
Great, thank you.
Could we add the word annual?
Annual.
Annually.
Um, I, I think that's a lot of work. It seems like you do, you know, a plan every few years, three years, three to five years. But, but just having it in here is important. Okay, moving on to objective number two, which is working with the PPACG Moving Forward Long Range Plan. Currently, it's the 2045 plan. They are starting to work on the 2050 plan. And PPACG is required to plan out that many years. So the first action is.
Can we talk about the objective? I'm sorry. Are we quite familiar with this 2045 long-range plan?
Staff is.
Staff is. The question I have, is there money set aside for the reliever route study in that, in that plan?
There is. CDOT has it in their budget. It's a placeholder in this plan, so it goes along with that. There is $500,000 that CDOT has set aside that will be available in 2023 to start the study.
So I think it's very important that, that, that particular document. Who is our city representative on the advisory? You are, or are you on tech?
I'm on tech. And then John is on the Citizens Advisory Committee. And from city council right now, it is Councilman Zulaga.
Okay, okay. It's so important, John, to be able to have that kind of language in, in that plan to.
You're more than welcome to come to any of those meetings if you'd like to come down.
Well, I'd like to have you tell me, like Sally did. Would you advocate for that plan, that study to be included in there?
We've got to fill in what they already have. We're not going to change it.
But you have an opportunity to change it.
I don't want to change their plan.
There, there is an opportunity to amend. It's a fairly lengthy process. What's important is that we ensure that the Woodland Park's projects are in either the fiscally constrained portion of this plan, which we have Highway 67 widening in the fiscally constrained portion. And that's slated for 2024 or '23. So that's in there. And then other projects are in the plan, but they're not within the funding possibilities.
Okay.
And, and it's just really important that staff is involved with the updates of these plans.
Yes, yes. As you guys know, I, I, I worked my career as a planner, too. And I understand very clearly the very importance of regional. The regional transportation plan. And if you said that we're, they're, they're in the process of looking at the 2050 plan at this time, that's our opportunity. We can't miss that opportunity to get that money's available to do this study for the reliever route.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So and then the second action is about monitoring the regional transportation plan and seeking opportunities for funding.
I'm a little concerned about aggressively pursue implementation of the best feasible US Highway 24 reliever route. That, that, that's very ambitious. And it's very goal-oriented. And again, I would try to incorporate into that particular action, the pursuing of the study for the reliever route. The reason I say that, one of the biggest reasons, too, is that we're in cooperation with Teller County Regional Council Governments, state transportation, Colorado Legislature, and even the US Congress, according to the statement. And I think as a community, we need to take the lead in making sure these things happen. And we need to take the lead from the Woodland Park perspective. And I'm saying that because I have seen so many projects that are initiated by CDOT that do not understand the interests or the best, they look out for CDOT. That's their job. So I think as a community, we need to take the lead and try to provide that. So I like to have that action kind of tweaked a little bit to talk about the study.
Corridor study?
Yeah.
Okay, and does the word aggressively bother you?
No, I, I, I think that's aspirational.
Okay.
But I think it's, it's not the best feasibility is to study.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can add reference to the study if that works for committee chairs.
Sure.
Okay, are you good with the second action there, Larry?
Started, yes.
Hey, moving on to objective number 1.3, which is about building and maintaining a network of complete streets which connect our major destinations safely and efficiently with neighborhoods. And complete streets means that if a new road comes in or if you're redoing a roadway, you look at the opportunity to add potential sidewalks, bike lanes, street trees, street. street furniture, lighting, all those things that make a street whole or complete. So I explain that the way your committee understood it. Okay. The first objective is implementing the pavement management plant program. The pavement management program is an analysis of our, all of our streets in terms of the condition that they're in. And then it proposes what treatments should be done on all the streets and in, within a certain time period. The last pavement management plan was 2018. And it basically said that the city must spend at least a million dollars a year maintaining our streets in order to keep them at a, I believe it's a 70% rating. So our new engineer will be involved with that very closely.
And has she had experience with complete streets before?
We, we are now advertising for a new engineer. Robin Brown, our previous engineer left us about a month ago.
Many years ago, we implemented ourselves. That's what Dave Butler did when he went out, surveyed all the streets, put that all together. We've been doing this for years. Same thing, just with a different net.
Yeah.
It's a good program.
It is. And then number 1.3.2 is implementing the GIS based asset management system. So this basically maps that pavement management plan so that that you keep track of when certain things are done and keep a history of that in the future. Prepare and implement Complete Streets Manual. So this would be guidelines associated with implementing the Complete Streets philosophy. Amen Design Criteria and Engineering specifications and associated ordinance to accommodate the street, complete streets approach. And then 1.3.5 is just being sensitive to negative impacts with traffic adjoining neighborhoods.
I think we need to add a word onto that one.
Okay.
Right after the word potential negative, add the word traffic impacts. You said it, but it wasn't, it's not written that way.
No, I, I think it's, I don't think it's traffic. I think it's commercial development, then it goes on later and it says, and to mitigate traffic noise, et cetera. I think the, I think the gas station next to somebody's house could be an issue, even if it didn't have, if there's not a lot of traffic.
But Lee, this section is dealing with transportation and not land use.
Well, then it shouldn't be the negative impacts of commercial development. Although that actually seems to work okay.
Well, I think it's just because commercial development, industrial have the largest impact of traffic on neighborhoods. Or could, has the potential.
Thumbs up, leave, leave it as is. Thumbs down, add the word traffic. Leave as is. Oh, let's see. Ellen, you're the tiebreaker. Put traffic in there. Is that what you want? Okay.
What did you want, Lee?
Oh. Does it, does the work, is that replacing commercial or is it somehow added? I just didn't even know it.
It's just added.
So it's commercial traffic development or traffic commercial development or?
The first line where it says be cognizant of and sensitive to potential negative traffic impacts.
That's, this is about maintenance, not traffic.
Okay.
It, it's in the complete streets. Okay. We're putting traffic in. Is that okay with you, Lee? Or do you?
Yeah, I, I, it seems to, the whole thing's on traffic. I, I, it narrows it more than I would have, but if the majority goes the other way, then that's fine. And that's not.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to objective 1.4, which is accommodating alternative means of transportation. So that's all those things listed there, transit, bicycle, pedestrian, micro mobility. And that is a range of small lightweight vehicles operated at speeds typically below 25 miles an hour. So we now have electric bikes and electric scooters. And who knows what else?
They don't have a, they don't have a place to ride on the street. They're not rated for a street. So make careful when you do that.
Right. So this is to coordinate those uses with trails, parks, trails and open space. And school district for future trails and sidewalks. Prepare and adopt a bike and sidewalk transportation plan with particular emphasis on the ADA. Right now, our bike and sidewalk plan is integrated into the parks, trails and open space plan. So this is usually pretty typical to see a separate plan for bike and sidewalks.
We do, do not paint all those stripes they've gotten the spring.
Where do you go? So confusing.
You don't even know where to go. The bikes don't know where to go. Nobody does.
So, and then the last one here is to continue to promote alternative transportation, which right now the senior, Teller County Senior Coalition provides for some transportation. Actually, it's pretty good. Very customized.
They have more buses than most city bus routes have.
Really?
They got a lot of vehicles.
They're a strong organization.
Oh, they are.
And they have great funding through CDOT. They get most of their transportation's dollars through CDOT. Okay, that takes care of the transportation goals. I would like to add one more action. I'm not sure, let's see, would be, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it. Probably under the under number one. We we add or replace the CIP. Something that CDOT has asked us to do is to update our access control plans. So on access control plan. This was done in 1996. And basically what it did was identify every single driveway and intersection and made them legal or closed them off. So it's been over 25 years since this plan was put in place. It's been extremely helpful as the improvements were done to Highway 24. We also have an access control plan for Highway 67. So I would propose that an action be added to review and revise the Highway 24 Access Control Plan as well as the Highway 67 Access Control Plan for adoption.
What kind of budget, budget will you need to do that?
We'll have to get money from PPACG. And, and there, there's quite a bit of dollars, as you know, coming down now for planning and design work. These would fit perfectly into those projects. Okay. Kristy, did you get that?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Kristy's keeping all the notes, so we're in good shape. Okay, moving on to drainage. Woodland Park will manage stormwater to prevent erosion, flooding, and to protect water quality and downstream users. And there is only one objective and five actions associated with this. First, the overarching objective is ensuring the city has comprehensive, environmentally sensitive and cost effective plan to manage stormwater runoff. And the Stormwater Master Plan identified in Action 1.1.1 is, was done in 2015. And so this document, the, this plan is being implemented slowly but surely. It's a great document. Continue to coordinate with PPACG and the Fountain Creek Watershed to update the city's drainage criteria. That was done in 2016. But with us moving into an MS4 community, there may need to be some tweaks to that. So that's good. 1.1.3 is annually examine stormwater fees and update them to comply with city ordinance for inflation. They actually have an inflation factor in them already. So, and that is looked at through the budget process. There's always.
Why is it annually if it's a three to five year task?
I would say this is an ongoing task. So good question. Because we do, as, through the budget process, look at stormwater fees every year. 1.1.4 is educating the public on preventing stormwater pollution, which is always good. And number five is to continue to promote low impact development. So what LEDs, LID is basically using your detention ponds for maybe what they call rain gardens, integrating them into the landscaping of your development. And also designing detention ponds that will infiltrate so that it becomes filtered through the groundwater. And yeah, we do talk to our applicants about integrating LIDs into their drainage design. So that's a good one.
So following Lee's lead, that would be ongoing.
It is, it is ongoing.
One of, excuse me, one of the difficulties we've had is that every time we get a really bad storm, this thing's echoing out. Every time we get a real bad storm, then everybody downstream kind of looks at Woodland Park for why'd you do it? It's not Woodland Park's fault. It's county's fault. Because what happened was we spent all that money, millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars behind Safeway to put that ladder system in there and fix all that so it'd be a slow run. And once you go past that road there and get down into county, because that's where the city limits stands. Just driving down that road, just that road that goes down it. They've never dredged it. They'd never put any banks back in. And when that thing gets gone, it rips all that stuff up down there. We already have plants and you put a new parking lot in. You have to, if you're in that area, you've got to determine how much, how fast that water gets released. And you do that by curving it, by slowing it down. I think we do a pretty good job on that. We always kind of take the, take the brunt of that. But the county's got a lot involved. They would never spend the money to do it. And that's what happened with us. But we always catch the heck for doing that.
Maybe we're looking at 1.12 on there and we add county to coordinate with. Kind of push them along a little bit. What do you think?
We'd be glad to do it. Just give us money.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do your work for you.
I think they should be involved. They're part of the problem.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Because stormwater does not recognize boundaries, you know, so it's like air quality and traffic. These are all regional considerations. Okay, and Kristy, I just have the relevant documents, I think, need to be tweaked.
Okay.
A little bit. If we can, the PPACG Council of Governments just referenced the Moving Forward Plan there. I don't know what the Woodland Park Trails Data 2020 is. Dawn, do you know what that is? I don't either. Kristy, I don't know where you, where that came up.
I, I'm trying to remember. I, I don't quite recall it. If that's there on purpose or if that was a mistake.
Yeah, and then CDOT's annual daily traffic counts is good, the comp plan. But there are two other studies that I think we need to add to this list. In 2015, a Woodland Park Traffic Circulation Study was done. So I think this has some good things in it that needs to be kept front and center.
I agree. There, there were elements from that plan that are incorporated in the background. So absolutely.
Yeah, and then even though it's very, very old. I think the 19, oh, I didn't grab it. The 1993 bypass study was done. And even though, and we're going to beef up the introduction or the background information a little bit. So let's, let's put that in there as well.
Thanks, Sally. I had that on my list too, because that actually set the framework for the city councils. That's my word. Not an ordinance, but it's a I can't remember the word, resolution, resolution, which identified corridor D at that time.
Yes.
Which is now the preliminary bypass reliever route concept. That, that was the initial one. That's where that first was identified. I, I'm glad you brought that up because I was involved with that study in 1993 as a planning director. And that particular study was highly citizen involved. We had hundreds of people show up at the old Paradise Lodge Restaurant. And I know Mr. Black knows that, but that, that was where that all occurred. And it came down to, well, we don't have room to keep the highway where it exists now. We need to do improvements. We identified all those things. The most logical route was to extend 67 from where it comes into 24 and go straight down, past the church property, past Bob Bartless property through. That was probably the most logical way to do it, but that was unacceptable primarily by the downtown people at that time. Said, no way. So the, the route that was chosen was the default route. And it was the default route. And the more you look at it and the more those past 30 years has occurred. And it takes a long time to do transportation planning. I mean, we never got anywhere further than we were in 1993, except being politically in the right place at the right time. And I'd hate to think what our traffic was going to be like in 30 years from now, if we don't start the process immediately. Thank you for my editorial.
We were thinking of that 30 years ago. Gosh, I can't believe it's been that long.
I know. I know. I was a young man with hair.
We had a meeting at, down next here. It was in this very room where let's work out a reliever. Sally put it together. We had CDOT here. We had all those players. And everybody said, it's a great idea, but not in my backyard.
Yep.
And once that happens, you're done. And then CDOT says, you've heard the term lane miles. Colorado froze the amount of lane miles that they would maintain. State adds that all up and comes up with a toll. They came to us and said, we'll be glad to do that, except you take over all the maintenance and that on Highway 24 from the entrance to Woodland Park to the end. And then we'll give you that many lane miles. We can't afford to do that. And those are kind of the stumbling blocks we ran into every time we did that. So we're taking another stab at it, and I don't know what's going to happen next few or four years, but we're trying.
So we've concluded the review of the transportation and drainage and want to thank the committee for working so hard and keeping things so succinct. You really tackled that big-
Ally, I think we said we were going to go back to the vision. Is anybody happy with it? I mean, it's grammatically challenged. It's sort of tacked together a couple of things. If everybody else is happy that it reads, all right, fine.
Thank you, Lee, for that reminder. So you see in the actions, there's a lot of emphasis on the reliever route. So having reduces traffic through our downtown captures it, but you could say reduces through traffic from our downtown area with a planned reliever route. Do you like that in the vision?
It works.
Something like that was my thought. But as I say, whatever people agree to.
I got one more question for the group, too. Subcommittee. What issue did you spend the most time discussing as a group? Yeah.
We spent a lot of time also looking at the well, the drainage, but also the the city's plan for refurbishing the streets.
Pavement management plan.
That's important to note. Really is. Because I think we're in sync.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's move on to community well-being. And I see Kim here, who was the scribe. I don't see their chair near it. Okay. This was a great group. So their vision statement is strive to create an environment where all people feel welcome, connected to one another, and involved in our mountain community by fostering opportunities for self-determination, inclusion, and engagement in activities that promote healthy and sustainable living patterns within the community. So a very broad, big vision. And moving down to, this basically included five elements, which were the city's recreation programs, education, and then into health, senior services, and added a civility section to this group, which I thought was really great. And so I think this is a great lead-in. Kristi and I have talked about the value of this map. And maybe because this section has only one photograph, which doesn't even include people in it. Oh, I guess there is a guy on the side of the pool. That it really, this chapter could really benefit from some great photographs for senior services, kids in recreation programs, education programs. And because most people really know where our private and public doctor's offices are and dental offices-
Sally, it's missing all the private schools.
Right. The private schools-
That would be an important addition.
Are named in the narrative.
Correct.
So we pick it up there. But I really think this map is not as helpful for a comprehensive plan. But I'm open, we're open to input.
I would agree with Sally. I put it in there for consistency between chapters so that there's a map for each. But I don't think it explains as much as some images of the different programs like Sally mentioned.
Under the background, under the health section, we don't even mention a regional hospital, which is such a great access to our community. It needs to be recognized. I know it's not in the city, but it's our hospital. I'd also recommend that under seniors citizens that we investigate becoming an age-friendly community. And an age-friendly community is a community that looks at its design standards and try to channel those for an average senior citizen to navigate. So there are things that would maybe increase the sidewalks in some areas or whatever. But at the same time, I think we need to be cognizant of the mobility of seniors. And we do that through an age-friendly community standards.
Those are two good recommendations.
Sally, for the first time, a lawyer has ever told you to take out the word whereas in the fifth line of health. Can we take out the word whereas?
You bet.
Whose is?
So I heard mentioned that we need to emphasize the hospital a little bit more. There is a sentence about the hospital and health. Is it recommended that we add another little bit about the hospital as a regional facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a bigger question about this section. And we can wait till we get towards the end if we want, or just bring it since there's a paragraph on it in the text here. I'm not so sure that civility is something we want to bring in as a subject of a variety of actions to be taken, including that everyone signs up to a civility document with provisions in it for corrective actions when they fall short. I frankly don't think it belongs in a comprehensive plan as our... But there's things in the community well-being section here, which are sort of soft things we're looking for. It's not to say, yes, I don't desire civility. As much as anything, I'm also put off by the fact of some embarrassment that we might think we need it. But my inclination would be to strike the section. Specific provisions in it, such as desiring to continue the citizen training we have. I've forgotten the phrase already. You know, the citizenship academy could easily go into the education section. But I'm not terribly comfortable with this entire section of civility. Am I the only one?
Why don't we go through them and then see how your colleagues feel at the end? But thanks, Lee, for that.
Perhaps we have the council write it. Perhaps we have the council write it. But seriously, that's something that we can look at. School systems, and that can be an item that this whole community should adopt. No matter what level we're at, whether it be in the public sector. I mean, everybody needs to work on it.
So why don't we go through their goals and objectives and then come back to that and see how it all fits together?
It's a good idea.
So, and then answer Lee's question about whether you're-
Lee, you bring up a good point. Either make something out of it, do something about it, or rather just get lip service to it in the paragraph.
So the first goal in this section deals with recreation primarily to provide a balanced selection of high-quality programs and activities that enhance health, education, and leisure time for citizens of all ages and interests. And then-
Just for clarification, add the word recreation after the words high quality. I mean, I know it's a recreation goal, number one. But when I started reading, I said, what are selection of high-quality programs? It wasn't specific.
Okay.
And there are several other 1.1, 1.11, 1.12. Just add the word recreation before the word programming.
Okay. So yeah, the first objective is continue to ensure that the recreation programs offered complement the community needs and that the city obtains sufficient revenues consistent with a fee recovery policy.
Can I ask you to explain that? I know what it means. I don't think it says it. Though, a fee recovery policy, it's a fee policy. It's a fee policy that considers the extent of cost recovery, I think.
Yes.
I don't think fee recovery policy is the right wording for what is probably intended.
Fee-cost recovery? Does that help, Lee?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there are 10 action items under here. Quickly going through, first is an interest survey. Second is collecting program data and analysis. The third deals with developing the fee-cost recovery policy. The recreation department does operate with a certain level of recovering 80% in their programs. So, but it's never been formalized into a written policy. The Aquatic Center has a target of 56% of the operating costs. So, but again, those policies haven't been actually written. They've got aspirational goals, basically. Number four, 1.1.4 is continuing to enhance the online registration and marketing. 1.1.5 is about expanding youth swimming activities. Number six is about the adult and senior swimming activities. Number seven is about providing employment and leadership opportunities for our teenagers, which Park and Rec does a wonderful job of giving kids the opportunity for refereeing and scorekeeping and lifeguarding.
I assume there was more applicants than jobs this summer?
There were more jobs than applicants. Just see, yeah. Number eight, 1.1.8 is about the relationship with the city and the school district of sharing facilities and other private facilities. And 1.1.9 is supporting the competitive clubs or sports programs by providing facilities. And then lastly, partnering with local businesses and organizations to promote sponsorships and fundraisers. So that's pretty much the recreation area. Sally?
Yes.
We didn't, do we need to mention Meadowwood Park anywhere, recreation?
That is covered in the facilities portion. So, and there was some question about should recreation be with the parks, trails, and open space? But that chapter is purely about facilities, the land, the improvements, that sort of thing. Programming is totally different. So it belongs in the well-being. The programming is about our well-being.
Sally, one of the things that I don't think we do enough of there in Woodland Park is that our pool. Go to Slida and see how they promote theirs. The summertime, to get people, marketing money that we provide the group to be able to put banners on the highway to say, come and swim here. We're a town of 8,000 people. We've got a $12 million pool.
Yeah.
And we don't do that. Slida does it all the time. Advertising the paper. Every hotel should have something in there about rates for tourism. Back when we came from Indiana, the swim team at the high school would make money in that, but they would be there and be the lifeguards. And we'd have open swim and that for the tourists that came in the community. We don't do marketing on that.
Well, most of the marketing for the recreation department is through social media and pushing out newsletters and information. They have a constant contact list of 3,000 people. So it, you know, it's mostly through that social media approach and-
But I want the people that are staying in Woodland Park tonight to know it's there at our hotels. Or at the campground.
Yep.
Good point. Can I interject a commercial here?
Yes.
Thank you. Lynn, committee, thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that your group has done for us. Just like I said, with the transportation, it's so critical to get your comments to us. Where we can take your comments, understand where you're coming from. And as we go through this and as we modify the plan from what you suggested, we follow your lead as much as we possibly can. So thank you very much. And please accept our scratching off and adding. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the education goal. Number one, Woodland Park values supports and invests in the local education systems as essential instruments in community development. First, the objective is the city fostering a positive educational environment by focusing on promotions, collaboration, and connections. And then there are four actions. The first action is encouraging residents to participate in promotional campaigns that feature the benefits of local- feature the benefits of local schools. The second is about continuing to share facilities with the schools and others. Three is continuing to partner with educate safer educational environments by reducing traffic congestion that occurs. I think we should also add in here, the city provides a school resource officer for helping the schools. So that goes along with safety educational. If we can add just a mention of not only by reducing traffic congestion, but by providing the school resource officer. In fact, we provide two resource officers. And lastly is exploring other collaborative opportunities with the school district and other schools.
In this section, I was very glad to read these particular actions and objectives. It's so easy when you're dealing with education to start talking about education. Let the school district educate. We're just there to support them and do what we can.
These two pages could stand some pictures.
Yes, we agree.
I, I have just a short question. I noticed that on the objective, we have focusing on promotion, collaborations, connections and several, we have a promotion action and three collaboration, but we don't have a connection action. Does that matter?
I don't know that it does matter because the main thing here is the sharing of facilities, which is the big connection that we have.
What do you think? I'll change collaboration to connection for that one.
There's an idea.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Right after educational action, collaboration 1.1.2, cross off collaboration and put connection. That is a connection.
Okay, good. We had an edge, second educational goal that deals with the library. City will continue to promote library programs and that the objective is the library being a hub of support for our entire community with two actions promoting, helping to promote the library's community programs through links and then continuing to honor the lease agreement and providing maintenance for the surrounding public parking lot.
I think that that needs a little explanation, sort of what is a what lease agreement?
The city and the library entered, the library actually is on city property adjacent to the cultural center and there is a 99-year lease for the library to be located there. So Lee, do you think it should be explained?
I, I, I just read, it, it seemed unclear to me. I guess, you know, one could guess that's what they must mean.
Why don't we reference it directly? It's, it's actually, in fact, the city clerk was looking at it today. It's actually an intergovernmental agreement. So why don't we just change it to the 99-year intergovernmental agreement for the location of the library? Something like.
All right. And that also, that also explains why you'd have to say continue to honor an intergovernmental agreement. If it's really a lease, probably have to honor, that would be contractual. Intergovernmental agreements tend to be a little, little looser. So that's, that's why it would be necessary to add it as, as an action.
Yes.
I really like this objective too, 2.1. The library becomes the hub of support for our entire community. That is so aspirational. Again, I think the library kind of centralizes the community, the, our collective knowledge. And the library is the proper place for the hub of support for our community should be. And I'll say, it shouldn't be City Hall, it should be the library. So, and that's from an old bureaucrat. So, so I, I really like that objective.
Okay, moving on to the health goal. Number one, Woodland Park community members live in a healthy lifestyle with access to recreation, fitness and medical care that supports their physical and mental health. And then there are two, one objective, encouraging the promotion of increased options for physical activities, social interaction and healthy lifestyles. And two actions, when new land use applications come before this commission and the staff, ensure that the facilities encourage the healthy lifestyles with ADA accessible sidewalks, paved, connected paths between, especially between civic buildings, and then continue to support the recreation rehabilitation, rehabilitative, medical businesses and agencies that operate in Woodland Park with expedited business-friendly services and government infrastructure. So one thing this group was really sensitive to is what is the role of the local government versus the private sector? So you'll see that these goals and objectives were created with that in mind. What is the role of local government? As we know, most health services are private, are privately provided.
So on action item 1.1.1, it talks about paved sidewalks and connecting paths. How does that impact the city's policy of accepting fees and loopholes sidewalks?
It, it really doesn't affect that because every review, you either install the sidewalk and staff tends to want the sidewalks installed when we have a private developer doing it as opposed to using public funds to make those connections. But, so that, that usually is the priority is to have the sidewalks as opposed to taking fees and loopholes.
I just seem to recall, most of the projects have fees and loopholes and then new sidewalks. So take it by case-by-case basis.
Okay. Moving on to the senior services is creating a community that supports seniors as they move through the aging process. And this has four action items. One objective, support, the objective is supporting seniors to be self-sufficient and able to age in place. So there's that terminology, Larry, for you as long as possible. This, these four, encouraging housing agencies and developers to consider providing senior housing.
It doesn't say senior.
No, it doesn't. You want me to add senior in there?
Maybe attainable slash senior housing.
Are you all, that sounds good?
I would say attainable senior housing, not a slash, given that this goal is a senior.
Good point, Lee.
Promote and expand the implementation of accessory dwelling units, consider more flexible zoning regulations.
Is that more flex, and maybe ask the committee here, is that more flexible zoning regulations of ADUs or is that just be more flexible?
It is of ADUs.
Okay.
So, so right now, our ADU code is pretty limiting that you must have your second, your mother-in-law unit either attached or within the existing building, this existing home. We don't allow for them to be detached, might be something that might be more flexible for people. They can be detached if they are placed above the garage, like a carriage house. The other thing is that we require all ADUs to have an affidavit signed and notarized every year. I mean, it may be fine to do it every couple of years and not necessarily notarized. It's very legalistic. So we, we've got some ideas to make them a little bit simpler.
Sally, are accessory dwelling units allowed in all residential districts?
They are, and even some in commercial districts if they have existing residential uses.
Okay. I, I, I started that particular action as being very good because it's personally going to affect me in a couple of years when I get old enough to have my daughter move back in. And I know she loves to live in the garage. But I think it's important that we start thinking about if we, if we can age in place, don't have to be institutionalized and still have a caregiver living full-time as a family member or whatever in that accessory dwelling unit. So that's a very important provision to loosen those restrictions, be more flexible. If there is abused, well, we have to monitor that. But in the meantime, I think there's much more good for accessory dwelling units than there are bad, bad consequences.
We have about 25 units, ADUs that were grandfathered. So these were prior to the rules coming in place in 2014. And since we established the 2014 rules, I'm going to guess, Laura, maybe we've processed about eight, six to eight, not very many. And one of the biggest challenges is actually the building code because these are looked at in the building code as attached housing and therefore you have to have fire separation, separate heating and cooling systems and vents. And so the building code becomes somewhat of a challenge sometimes, unless they're building them from the ground up. But to retrofit an existing home for an accessory dwelling unit is sometimes a challenge.
But let's add some admonition to that, that concern by adding to the end of 1.1.2 and consider more flexible zoning and building code regulations.
But we have no influence on the building codes.
Well, we adopt them.
But we have no, we cannot modify those fire and mechanical codes. I mean, I just, it's nice to be able to think we can, but. Next time we adopt building codes, you should come join us. It's.
So Sally, we just finished, we add of ADUs at the end after zoning regulations?
Number 1.1.3 is continue to support the Woodland Park Senior Center organizations. The city actually owns the building with the senior center. And so the club has a lease with the city. And then continue to provide information and access resources for seniors, senior Woodland Park residents. Okay, here's the civility goal. Woodland Park city management and city council will work towards promoting public civility within our city departments and among our city officials, including city management, city council and all city committees. And then objective, one objective, measure progress toward the civility goal in the community, paper reporting in the community newspaper, basically, in the language and comments of key community influences at city council and committee meetings and in the collection, can, collect, connection, collection of citizen surveys on the Woodland Park city page. So that's the objective. And I kind of felt that measuring progress might be kind of difficult. I mean, I think that we try to make progress toward these things versus measure progress toward.
Measure the arguments?
Yeah, right.
Good point.
So if you're okay, I'd like to change that verb to make progress toward kind of a subjective evaluation.
Maybe we can stop right here and we can listen to the subcommittee's rationale of including.
The why.
The why? I mean, I read the paper, so I have a good idea.
So I don't know. My name's Kim Ayello, and my husband Larry, we're new. I worked at Woodland Park, we've been here for a week, because we were in the program for over a year. So I asked to join.
Kim's got a nice voice.
Could the speaker step to the microphone?
It's not there.
Yeah, it's not there. Can you hear me?
No.
We can't, it's recording.
So the microphone's not working.
Oh, no.
Okay. Try this one. We'll play musical.
Can you hear, I think you can hear me now. So, Kim Ayello, I'll reintroduce myself. And I was described, but new here to Woodland Park. We've been building a home for over a year. And as part of that, then we wanted to stay connected to Woodland Park. We are both retiring, active duty, served for 29 years and we've lived all over the country. And we chose Woodland Park to be our forever home. And in doing that, we actually kind of assessed Woodland Park before we actually bought our land about three years ago.
I think it's a reverberant.
Oh my golly. So, so we actually kind of interviewed Woodland Park and is it the community we want to live in? So when I was.
I'm sorry, Kim.
It's okay. Should I just come there?
So when I asked Tony Perry, who is someone that we've been working with, and I said, I'd really like to be a part of the community and how do I become a part of the communities? And he said, well, Kim, we've got this, this plan that we're working on. So I was able to join this team. And as we started, we first started looking at, how do you define health? What, what is health? You know, that, you know, we're saying, we're talking about well-being, but what is health? And part of well, health is your mental well-being. It's your spirituality. It's not just your physical being, but it's also your mental and your spirituality, if you look at definitions of health. And of note, I've been in the healthcare field in the military for 29 years and Mary, who is the one that was running this, has also been in the healthcare field for over 30 years. So that was kind of, so we started there. So then, as we started going through, we had Eileen who spoke about the, kind of the civics. And one of the things that I had brought up, because I was living in Colorado Springs as I was in the process of watching my home being built from a little bit of a distance, I saw a lot in the news and I saw a lot on social media, a lot of negative things about Woodland Park. And I questioned why I was moving here. This was like our forever home of 29 years of living all over the country. And I sent various notes and I brought it up in a committee and I know a few were in that one, Sally, but I said, is this is what Woodland Park's about? We fight with each other, we argue, we don't respect each other's values, that gets to the mental and the spiritual well-being. So that's how then we just kind of started the road of, well, why don't we include that, but in a way that we focus on respect and we focus on treating each other and accepting differences and how we approach problems and, and solutions. So that's how this came about. And it wasn't to be contentious. It was actually, let's start highlighting the positive things of Woodland Park. When I see social media, we should see the great things that this community is doing, whether it's, you know, the things that are happening in our schools, because there's so many positive things, but that isn't highlighted from an outsider perspective. So that's why I said, well, why don't we add this part? And that's kind of how the journey began. And Eileen, who really took. And Eileen, who really took, she's with Karis College, Karis College. So she did a lot of work on how do we define it? How do we want to get after it? And that's kind of how it began. But it goes back to, what's the definition of health? And holistic health is inclusive of both mental and spiritual well-being. Did I answer your questions? Right, so why don't my notes in front of me because my computer can't seem to. But civility is, it's about how, how we treat people.
Okay.
Do we respect each other? Do we respect the differences in the backgrounds? So that was a part of some of our objectives when you say people feel connected, they feel welcome, they feel part of a community. Whatever, regardless of their background or their perspective of things. And if I can, like, I don't have my notes in front of me, that's why.
So. We want to go through the. But that's, that's the why. That was the why, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
So really about how do we promote a positive image and treat each other with respect?
And I would just add real quick that I was pretty impressed with their ability to take that. Goal and actually be able to turn into actions. Because I think that was fairly difficult to do, and I think they did a good job.
So shall we just touch on each one of these five actions? Which the first one is to continue to offer the Citizens Academy. And encourage those who are running for office to take this, go through the Citizens Academy. I know a number of you have done that and it's really beneficial. One point, one point two is adding a public civility module to the Citizens Academy. Kind of that number one point, one point three is that upon election or appointment to office. That candidates sign a civil servant agreement that. Basically sets expectations for folks, folks' behavior during office.
I will say right now, I am totally against having anybody sign any kind of agreement like that. It's.
It's not a civil servant agreement anyways, and being drafted by an outside entity seems a little bit over the top as well.
I would just, I recommend that we strike that entire provision, action.
Okay. Moving on to one point, one point four is developing a citizens survey to measure the perceptions. About civility.
Yeah, I noticed you skipped the word. You struck it just, you couldn't stand to even read it. It's not perceptions about decreased civility, it's just perceptions about civility.
There we go.
Yes. And then number one point, one point five is developing a public relations campaign.
Sorry, what's the community well-being committee? That's the group that worked on this section, right?
Yes.
So has that become a, it's recommending that it become a permanent committee, apparently?
Um, well, they, they want to continue to monitor these types of, these actions.
If that's the case, then it sounds like there should be an act. I'm not recommending it, but you'd have to have an act, have to make clear, we're saying that what that is. The, the committee which worked on this section should remain, continue to be constituted as a committee to continue to review this subject for at least another year. Which I, I don't have any reason to think that this committee is particularly. Well, well adapted to be the evaluators of civility. Although there's some, it sounds like there's some, some expertise that among the particular people that are on it. The, this seems to be taking a different role than other committees supporting the comprehensive plan is taken.
How do you all feel about that?
Well, I, I found the whole goal very interesting, very interesting. I, 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 I don't do social media, my social media is called the Courier.
Could you speak into?
Yes. Again, I, I find this goal very interesting. Frankly, I don't know if it has a place within the comp plan. And I try to think where would be a good, better place for it than the comp plan. But I've never seen such a goal in a comp plan before. It's certainly, I don't think Woodland Park is unique, is having this civility issue. It's rampant across our country and the world at this point. I'd like to see it in another place except for the, and take it out of the comp plan.
I have to say that our DOLA state planners were very excited about this goal. And thought Woodland Park is identifying an issue and trying to take steps forward to address it.
Well, that's very important to know because if we're really looking at as a model, this could be the first draft. And this first draft can be modified from this point.
You know, I, I completely understand wanting to address it. And it's, and we're just a, a small microcosm of what's happening nationwide. And it's a problem getting worse. I understand wanting to address it completely too. But where do you get to the point where you're, you're monitoring the right to free speech? That's a very sensitive item. And to me, I think it, it's up to us as citizens to vote accordingly to the people that we want to represent our community. And not. Get close to that free speech impediment. I think that's a, that's a razor's edge that you, you probably don't want to go to. Would be my opinion.
I'd like to see it strike that, find some other place to use it, get the council to endorse it. I'm here. I'm not going to vote on how we have to talk. That's what item one one five is.
Now, this is about establishing a decorum. Where you can get business done in a structure that is civil.
In profession.
Yes.
Ellen, Ken?
Well, it's not limiting the ideas that are being expressed. And that's what freedom of speech is all about. So I can call you some bad names and still get the point across by calling you courteously, by your proper name. So I don't think we're, civility is something that we should strive for civic organizations. So I don't think it's a freedom of speech issue. Because your ideas are being expressed, are still able to be expressed. So, and which segment would this go into? You know, community well-being. I don't know a more appropriate section in this book.
I just thought of one, the introduction of the plan. We could talk about the wheel of recognizes as the community international interest. Community and natural, and then we could discuss it in that section. Maybe that's a good place where it can.
Okay. Like, look at that. I don't think it should just be eliminated. I think I support having it included in this.
I don't think we can probably make that decision today. I think it should be included somewhere in this comprehensive plan. I, I think it's hard to measure progress towards civility, even make, you know, progress towards it. I think as far as social media is concerned, we need to listen, we need to have more positive voices out there. And make an effort to get more positive social media perceptions going. So this might be a little too detailed for me as far as making the progress on. Getting along.
If it were more general and less detailed, it might be easier to swallow in this part.
That's what I was going to bring up.
Yes.
We could use these points, but you're certainly not going to lose your job if you got elected or appointed to a position because you run civil. I mean, come on.
You said something wrong.
Yeah, haven't we eliminated one point, one point three, which contains that?
Yes.
So that's off the table already.
Yeah, that's done. Yeah.
We can.
So to educate people how to be civil in a meeting and how to conduct themselves in public is what the, the one, item ones and two address. And measurements. I don't have an objection to that.
I mean, I don't mind the, either, also the training piece to be in a public office. Just as a re-awareness to how you should act. I mean, you, you think you shouldn't need to be trained on that, but the world's changing.
Well, I don't think we need one point, one point four, either on the citizens survey to measure perceptions and other measurement. But I do like the, you know, the Citizens Academy and the historic values of the county's, a little bit of history. That's one.
Hey, Lee?
Yes.
You've heard, you've heard of us discuss this, and you were the one who started this whole discussion. What, what?
I think probably people, people would have been raising this, raising the similar questions in any event. Please don't, please don't take my concerns about this, about this goal and its various actions as being opposed to civility. I, I hope, I, I hope that I conduct myself in a civil manner on this, on this commission. Civility, I, I understand to mean showing, showing respect for and treating others with dignity. In one's interactions with them. Disagreement on the policy. I, you know, I, I think X, you think Y. That's not, that's not lack, not lack of civility. But when those differences are sharp, people often confuse policy disagreements with disagreements on civility. And I think actually a lot of the issues in Woodland Park that have been thought of as being matters of lack of civility. Do reflect fundamental policy differences to a much greater extent than they do civility. I, I'm concerned with trying, with, 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 certainly in any specific way of trying to correct this perceived problem in, in Woodland Park. And I, I think I mentioned before. The, the thought that it is, the thought that it is more of a problem here than elsewhere is somewhat disturbing. I don't really think it is. I think as a general, as a general aspirational statement can, like we say somewhere in the comprehensive plan. That we wish to promote civility within the conduct of city business. Both sides, by, by the public and by, by city officials and members of boards and the like. I think that's probably okay. As a matter of. Dictating in some manner or trying to prescribe how we reach that result over a ten-year plan into the future. Doesn't seem right to me. It's, I mean, I, I have done some looking, there are codes of conduct that various governmental, including cities have adopted. But I don't think this is a place for it. I haven't seen it in a comprehensive plan and as structured here, I would, I, I disagree, I just disagree with it being written as a series of these, the action, action items to be taken.
How about if we bring back this particular section and I can work with the committee? Kim and I can express some of the concerns that all of you have. And we can bring back maybe an abbreviated, more general approach.
You know, what's happened? I've been here twenty-six years. I've been involved with serving on government committees here for twenty. I've never been in that kind of a situation. I've never had a problem. Fellow people on committees. Maybe I've just been lucky. But that's the climate I like up here. I respect this area. Do we have a couple of stinkers? Harry Towns got a couple of stinkers. Okay, and you, you deal with that, but you go on. This is an aspirational document with action items that can get people fired. We got it, we just got to modify it.
Right, right, I think we can soften it a little bit. You know, when I was in elementary school, we were graded on citizenship.
I bet you got an A.
Almost a better work.
I think we've kind of lost that value. And I think it's, as I said, the state folks were just amazed that this was back in our minds.
Or maybe citizenship.
And I guess I'd also say, let's take this out of this particular section. And include it as, in the introduction as area, that's something we want to strive for.
Yes, so let's, let's work on it and we'll bring it back and see where the appropriate place is for it. Okay. All right. We're, we're almost at two hours and we've got one more chapter to do. And we have three of the members here.
Actually, four.
Oh, four, yes. Oh, and Al is asking if we can take a five-minute break? Does that work for you all?
The time is at seven twenty-one.
Okay, two minutes.
bathrooms would get crowded.
No. It does. I was surprised she said that. Let me know how that needs to be changed. Gone. Yeah. Oh, needs to be added. Okay, thank you. Okay, with. Yes, yes. Right. We need to blast through this arts and community heritage. And Ellen, Ellen was part of this committee, so, um, and they've been patiently waiting. Through our previous discussions. Citizenship discussion. I think I like that too. Right. It has a more positive connotation. Okay, let's move on.
Wait a minute, it's not seven thirty?
Oh.
Time to call everybody back in. Anybody breaks, gotta report back. If not.
On page one oh one. The reason we changed formats, one column.
Um, Kristy, you want to answer that question? It has a different, um, format.
The, uh, community arts and, and heritage, uh, chapter.
Page one oh one, the last page of the, uh, previous section.
Um, yeah, that was a, a formatting error that, um, was caught by that committee and, and will be fixed.
Thank you.
Seven thirty, we're back on the clock.
Okay. Talking about arts, culture and community heritage. Their vision is to enrich our community and facilitate art and cultural development by connecting residents. Local businesses, local government and visitors to foster an appreciation of the arts and culture.
I got my commercial.
Okay, a commercial.
To the committee members here, thank you very much. I know this, this is the third time you heard it tonight, but I am very sincere. For appreciate all the work that you have done to prepare your chapter for us to take it to the next level in the planning process. It is so important that we listen to your ideas, but it's also important that you understand that we have the ability. To tweak, change, modify, add, subtract, multiply and divide. So thank you very much. It's appreciated. And, uh, whatever we're done, I have a follow-up question.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Um, so the background section, the one, couple of things that I would like to see is that. Um, it's a little bit wordy about the historical society. And does not have a heading even for the Woodland Park Historical Committee. Um, the historical committee is actually the enabling legislation and the city's committee. The society is, oh my goodness. The society is a nonprofit, private nonprofit, but the city does have. Uh, an interest and a partnership with the society. In that, uh, the city provides them buildings and the mu, they operate history park. And there is an individual, um, staff member who is a city liaison on their board. So, um, Kristy and I have already talked about just kind of restructuring this a little bit more. Uh, to be able to highlight the Woodland Park Historical, um, Committee. And, uh, kind of take out some of the redundant words. And then lastly, um, in the events section, I'll scroll down to events. Um, this is a great description of, uh, so many events that Woodland Park has. And I just think it needs a couple of photos that really highlight these terrific events. Others have comments about the background?
I, I just wondered whether the photo of, of the U Chief could be turned.
It, it has been.
It has turned. Yes, thank you. Unless we're trying to, uh, get our attention.
Yeah, I think that downspout is supposed to be horizontal, not vertical.
Yeah. It's been rotated.
Sally, can I make a comment?
Please.
Kristy, um, this is Lori and, uh, are you in receipt by chance? We had some corrections to make. Uh, they were kind of minor, but it did make some, uh, clarifications on some things. And I would also call to your attention, item one point, two point two and one point, two point three are duplicated. That appears to be the same thing. So, um, I'm just, I would, are, are you in receipt, Kristy, of that? Uh, email from me?
Um, yes, the, the one that, um, you sent earlier this week?
No, I actually would have sent it, um, the end of July, I believe.
Okay, let me look and, and double check and make sure that I do have that.
Right, because of the copies that we all have are the draft. So I can't tell if you are actually in receipt and have made those corrections or not. So I just wanted to give that caveat that there were some corrections that we did make. And we can speak to those too, because Carolyn is here, Carolyn Smith, and she authored a lot of those corrections as well. So if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer those. And I would also just like to add that we might be the last section. It might be number thirteen. However, we also believe that we, uh, none of these sections are mutually exclusive. And we also believe, um, that they must be interactive and complementary to each other. Nothing here happens in a vacuum. And we are intimately linked to the section six, the economic and tourism as well. We are also linked to the fact that we have in this community probably six or seven signature events that are highly successful. Um, we also are aware, just as you are with the surveys that have come back. The citizenry here is not necessarily in favor of adding more events. But embellishing and building on the events that we have. That is something that our committee recognized. We, we already streamlined our section from what it was 10 years ago. It was wordy. This is wordy now, Sally, compared to what it was. Yes. Um, we've improved it greatly and yes, we can probably fine tune it some more. But just know, we don't believe this happens in a vacuum. It's about values and it's about the quality of life in this community, those that live here. Events do not necessarily translate into success or dollars. There's a lot of people now that live in this community that that is not their value. So I just want to throw that out, that as you guys look at this document, please look at how this should be woven together. And how one section impacts another. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lori, you know, that's part of our responsibility to look at those inconsistencies between the sections.
Yes.
And we, we plan to do that.
Thank you. Carolyn, I'm gonna ask you, did you have anything to add?
Um, probably not. One of the things that we did send in for correction rather than. Um, right under background, calling it the U Pass Historical Society, we suggested, uh, just preserving our history. And then it would encompass both the, um, Preservation Committee and the Historical Society. So we, that was one way we suggested doing it. And then under events, we suggested calling it community events and just some little tweaking like that. Um, table five, signature event locations, because it didn't all events. And there was a du, what we felt was a duplicated sentence, um, that just should be dropped.
I caught that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's, uh, the U Pass History Park and Museum Center. Yeah.
Yeah.
Same as the opening. On that first part.
Got that, Kristy?
We got, we got that.
I do.
Just to pick, uh, back up on what Carol, Carolyn just said. I think this is important to have two parts.
I do too.
U Pass Historical Society and the Woodland Park Historical Preservation Committee, two different sections. And they have distincting, distinctive roles and responsibilities. So let's just clarify what that is.
One question we had, um, this is just maybe us not knowing, under the background, we have two museums?
I think that the dinosaur resource center may be considered a museum as well as the U Pass Historical Society.
Okay. Um, under table eight. The reserve, we talk, talk at the bottom, talking that gallery, it's really reserved dash our gallery. And then we wanted to add the Dixon Auditorium. And then we have a duplicate under goals and objectives, arts and culture objectives. There's a duplication, I believe. Lori mentioned that. So one of those just need to drop four and make by four. And then, um. I believe we were moving something. Under the arts and culture objective one point three, and I think that's in the email. I don't have that totally with me. So there were just some corrections like that.
Okay, good points.
Okay, that, that was everything that we sent into Kristy. So we just wanted to make sure that those were highlighted first and foremost.
Okay.
And, um, that duplication of one point, two point two and one point, two point four.
Yes.
We believe measurement is everything in terms of the impact of events on this community. And until we start utilizing good data and until we track that data. We have, all in short, in my opinion, as a community to have good data to make good decisions. And that item was in the comp plan in this section 10 years ago. It was never, it has not been enacted. We have not put together a plan to try to figure out how to gather data. We have got to do that better as a community to be more proactive in this area with events rather than reactive.
Yeah. The only data that we did collect, um, routinely into, in the last decade. Was the number, an estimated number of participants for events. So each year the staff does, uh, a temporary use permit orientation in January. And so what we do is ask those event coordinators approximately how many people attended your event. So that's where some of these numbers came from. But Lori's correct, there's not a real deep dive in the events. Pro, what benefits do they provide besides coming to a free event for the community to gather? Is it truly increasing sales tax and business in the community? I don't know how to measure that yet, but I'm sure other communities have thought about this too.
I'm not so sure you can, because indirectly, yes, directly is pretty tough.
Now, what we would have to do is actually survey the business owners and ask them. Um, what they've, you know, what the impacts, positive and negative have been. Um, because you can't look at sales tax on a particular day and report that.
Lori, do you ever have like, you know, what an art walk is? Where you have a walk down kind of history lane? Where is it ever organized that some people can walk among the, those areas? And every one of them is open or it's, uh, somebody there to talk to them about it? Have you ever done things? And I don't know, I'm guilty if you do it.
Um, there is now the Reserve Gallery is doing art walks, but there's also a, um. Historical walk, walking tour that every Saturday morning. Um, Renee Rocliff will take you around downtown and talk about the history.
There is. I didn't know that.
Yeah, how do we? That's cool. How do we make that more public?
Yeah.
I lived here 15 years and everyone existed.
Yep, yeah, so.
What a great thing to do with the senior, they got so many vehicles, buses and that. We could have some kind of a weekend, a history weekend or something like that and bring people in. or something like that and bring people in and have people within the committee talk about that. I think that'd be a great thing to do.
Yeah, there's lots of great things we could do around history and culture. But it's, you know, most of the people involved are volunteers and stretched very thin. So.
I never knew we had half these places.
Yeah, so Laura, let's um, walk through the text and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. This table for the landmarks, there are fourteen landmarked buildings in Woodland Park by the Preservation Committee. And the, the list is actually based on when they were landmarked in sequence. So the very last landmark we did, the El Dorado Casino is actually the daycare over here on West Street, Preschool in the Pines.
That was a question I was going to ask Sally. And also in the text in the background, it says that we had fourteen, or it didn't say. It said that we had eight identified in two thousand and five. So the total historical landmarks in our community are fourteen?
It is.
Okay, so we should reference that in, in that paragraph.
Okay. Yep.
Sometimes some of the elementary schools are that, do they go on walks where, where you guys show them the history of Woodland Park? You know that kind of stuff too?
The Historical Society has, um, gets the, I think they're second graders that come to History Park and they have a whole day of activities. Yeah, it's really great. Thanks to Pat Hislop. Yeah.
That's great.
No, I think your point is well taken. There's a lot of good things being done by the Preservation Committee and the Historical Society. It's just that they don't get in the newspaper as much.
You gotta toot your horn a little more.
Yep.
Good try.
The lower portion of this cultural event section, Kristy and I talked about removing the Woodland Park Middle School um, since it's off the map anyway, and add the Dinosaur Resource Center, because that's a big attraction for cultural events. So moving on to uh, goals, objectives and actions. The first goal is increase public art and cultural expression throughout Woodland Park. Um, objective is supporting the local artists, musicians, performers and efforts to provide opportunities to learn, appreciate and enjoy art, music and performing arts. There are five actions. Providing assistance with facility, major events by, with first responders and emergency services. Uh, number two is meeting with visual and performing arts folks to explore opportunities.
Sally, that's artists?
Artists. Yes. Thanks, that's why I stumbled over it. Number three is encouraging the cultural activities through all those various groups. Number four is interesting, reinstating the Community Investment Fund. That was something that council eliminated last year.
That's a budget concern?
It's budget related. Uh, and then collaborating with the RE2 School District Library and other groups to explore art in public places program. Second objective is supporting the cultural events by promoting local art and hosting community activities. Number two, our second one is what we just discussed about creating a system that will determine the impacts or document the impacts of these events, positive and negative.
And is that ongoing or is that going to be something you're gonna, over the next year or two or three or some period, someone's gonna figure out?
It says ongoing.
That's why I asked, yeah. It sounded like it wasn't ongoing.
Yeah. Was not ongoing.
So is it one to two years? Is that some?
Lori, do you want to put a timeline on that? Let's put one to two years and try to set the bar high on this one census to carry over. Let's see, improve the process to attain temporary use permits and especially vent vendors. This is one reason why we have the orientation every year to help uh, event coordinators with there, there's a huge amount of engagement with coordinating events, lot of moving parts. This is one point two point four goes away and then one point two point five becomes four, ensuring that these events um, are ADA compliant.
That should be ongoing.
That should be ongoing, yes. And you know, one of the great things about the renovation of Memorial Park was to allow for handicap challenge folks to participate.
The word is accessibility.
Accessibility, yes. Okay. Uh, objective number three is improving the existing facilities and have a collaboration of different visions of what that could be. Um, and here in action one and two is continuing to support partnerships between the school districts and local organizations to utilize Dixon Auditorium. Continue to support uh, and facilitate the usage of Midland Pavilion. That's next to the Cultural Center.
Is that a city facility?
It is.
A city facility?
Yes, it's a city facility. Objective four is continue to encourage arts, culture and historical references in downtown Woodland Park.
What is a reference? Is it like a plaque? Is it some kind of information? That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's kind of interpretive signage, those sorts of things.
Okay.
Um, concentrate public art in the downtown and continue to pursue uh, the beautification flower program. Another budget driven kind of thing. Okay, heritage goal. So that was arts and culture under the arts and culture. Now, moving on to heritage, which is encouraging Woodland Park community members to become part of the local history and understand the importance and protection and preserving it. There are two objectives under heritage. Increase the public awareness of the value of Woodland Park's history and historical resources with seven action items. Continuing the historic, history interviews and actually Larry Black does those with um, the Historical Society. Lots and lots of them. And they're having those digitized too. So they're no longer on the old tapes they had. Consider developing a historical overlay zone, walking tours and place interpretive signage in front of historic buildings.
So I have a question about the historical overlay zone. Is that a zoning zone or is it some other, some other, something mean, means something else?
So it is a zoning zone. That would be added to the municipal code, Lee, but it usually is in lieu of having a historical district. This is a little bit more flexible if you have a neighborhood that has, let's say, great cabins in it. And we don't, in our legislation, um, our law doesn't allow for districts. But it's not to say that a, an overlay zone with design standards could be applied. I don't see the city doing this, but it.
I, I'm not so sure that we, I guess, because it says consider. I mean, it's, it's okay, but I, I would have to take some long thought before. I think that really made sense, but everyone, is everyone else okay with it? It does say consider, so we can sort of put it in without really worrying about it, I suppose, but I, I I'm not prepared to say that that's, that's a positive idea without understanding it better.
I, I, I think the concept, Lee, the, the, the way I interpreted it to be is that we have a uh, historical landmarks that we designate probably individual structures primarily.
Yeah, but that's not, yeah, that's not, okay, that's, that's not quite what I would take an overlay zone as, but.
Well, no, no, it's not. I was getting to that. That the overlay zone would encompass a larger area, just like Sally said. It would be a grouping or a neighborhood that has those historical cabins. And we, we think those cabins have a historical significance. Why don't we try to protect and reserve those? And maybe that overlay is the correct instrument to do it for more than one structure, more than one property owner. That's the way I kind of looked at it, but I agree with you, as long as it has the word consider, we can do that at a later time.
If, if it's gonna be in there, I would make it a separate action item with a different timeframe than ongoing. I know we've already got seven, but I would say just make eight if we, if we really want to keep it.
Why don't we just ask for that to be refined? Because you're right, that's a good point.
Okay, so everybody agree we should pull the overlay zone out and refine that with a separate action? Okay, okay. And you're okay with that, Lori?
Jury's interested in getting to go.
Okay, you have to be, ongoing is from the standpoint, Larry, to your point, we would be adding hopefully designated properties throughout the coming years. So as we add designated properties, it is ongoing by that definition because that overlay zone, if we were to go that way to help us down the road, there's you know, the City Historical Preservation Group, the city is also a CLG, Certified Local Government. There's all sorts of reasons and positive things and reasons to do this down the road. So if we limit it and say it can only be for a short period of time, we were kind of folding it into the fact that that overlay zone, we will be adding additional um, structures that could be designated with a local landmark and they theoretically could be included in that zone. So our thought process was it needs to be flexible. It was also something that was present in the comp plan ten years ago, for that very reason, because over the last.
And nothing happened, there's no historical overlay zone.
We currently have, do not have a historical overlay zone, no. But we've done a lot of work in the last ten years to have reconnaissance surveys for additional properties. So we're getting closer to possibly even considering doing something like that. Is that right, Sally? Yeah.
Okay, um, moving to one point, one point three is the collaboration between other groups that are involved in historic preservation. We even had the, one of the Park County Preservation Committee members attend last month's meeting. So that's, it's, it's always great. And there's tons of historic activity in this region, um, and from Cripple Creek and Victor down to um, Old Colorado City. So lots of groups working on this. Next is uh, celebrating Preservation Month. Next is continuing a strong membership of the Preservation Committee. And uh, yeah, we've got openings. So anybody who knows anybody who would like to be involved in this, we could use some more, another member. Publicize and celebrate the historic landmark plaques. Uh, the last three buildings we added, we had a really nice little um, walking tour and lunch and it was fun to do that. Uh, and then let's see, number seven is to integrate the school curriculum into our local programs. So that's part of that second grade tours. And then we're talking about adding one point, one point eight uh, for the overlay zones. Moving on to objective number two, encourage preservation of identified historic res- uh, resources. And the first action is develop guidelines and standards. Number two is um, ensure that the Preservation Committee is included in the referral process. Uh, ensure, number three is ensure consideration is given to impacts of demolition proposals. Uh, some communities actually have a waiting time period before a demolition permit is issued. We don't have that, but at least we do have a demolition permit process in place. And one of the things that we do is collect old photographs and document the history of that building before it's demolished. And then encourage developers to salvage components of demolished areas. A good example of that is the Sonic had recycled the um, Manitou Pink Rock that came off the old hotel that was on that site. Uh, and then incorporating historic elements in new buildings, both inside and out. Hey, any questions about that? Community heritage goal number two is dedicate resources to recovering and promoting Woodland Park's history. Objective, first objective is promoting a strong sense of Woodland Park's history. The five actions under that is making sure the Preservation Committee has a little bit of a budget to work with each year. And they do now. Uh, incorporating historic persons, events and themes into public art and his historic displays. Celebrating Woodland Park's history through public and private means with special events, historic landmarks. Number two point, one point four is documenting local family histories and other ways to promote all these incredible um, stories that we have here. And then two point, one point five is continue to grow and expand History Park. And um, we also have the Railroad Depot at Bergstrom Park and then the Junction House down on the south side of town that has yet to be renovated. and then the Junction House down on the south side of town that has yet to be renovated. Herited objective number two is creating a sense of place by working with all these various groups to incorporate interpretive signage. And we did have design done for the cog car and Bergstrom Park. We don't have the funds yet to be able to install that, but that's our first panel that has been designed.
That's, that section there is a good example of that cross pollination between sections of the plan. Now Lori just referred to that. That's what we need to take a look at. We have other sections talking about creating a sense of place and that type of thing. We just make make sure they're compatible.
Yep. And then lastly is encouraging residents and visitors to experience our sense of community and cultural appreciation. So and then these are the relevant documents. So that concludes this work on the 13th chapter in in the comp plan. So, good work.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
As a group, what did you spend most of your time talking about? Anything does gather up a lot of your energy and thought?
A lot of the desires and visions and dreams of those people are gone with them. And those were the the shakers and the movers in the community. So I I think we discovered that their great ideas, maybe, and they were aspirational. But some of those things did not come to fruition as much as maybe the dreamers and the players. I I would say there are four or five major individuals. I was involved with this committee 10 years ago. And I think five of those individuals are gone now. From either the community have passed on or are no longer participating. So that's huge. And that talks to, again, the value of what, i- is this a community value? Or is it a group's value and getting people plugged into those missions and goals and objectives? If it's a true value, it's about us incorporating those people into that. If it is a community value, to carry on and to make something of it.
Quick question, should, should we, could we somehow document, whether it be video or something, those people in our community that are still here, that are vital to the the history of this community, that we can like make some video, their their history and keep it archived, so it doesn't get lost when they age out, because we know that's going to happen.
But actually, that's going on on an ongoing basis right now. And there's some wonderful things that have been unearthed just in the last six, eight months through the COVID process. I have an old classmate of mine of stuff that was found in his dad's garage. And Larry's been intimately involved in getting the old rodeo dude ranch footage out of the dust out of the moss and it's great footage. So and these interviews have been going on, so that's an ongoing thing.
Good.
Lori, there's a lot, there's books that are published about you past, they're in all the book. Is there something that shows all, does the Woodland Park book contain these different historic landmarks?
To my knowledge, yes. Sally's shaking her head, yes, yeah.
Very good.
There's, there's probably about five or six really good books, of which Larry's the author of.
Thank you.
But there's a cemetery book too that highlights some of the original settlers here. I mean, it's, there's lots of good material.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we were going to tonight talk about the future land use map, but due to the hour and we've been going a while and Jerry has been patiently sitting here. Want to thank the subcommittee again for doing it. And turn the meeting, if we can give Jerry five minutes, 10 minutes, that you're going to bring an issue forward to the planning commissioners.
I'm hoping this microphone will work this way. Okay, my name is Jerry Penland. I live at 1331 Masters Drive here in Woodland Park over by the golf course. I appreciate your time to let me talk about something that is not really a major problem right now. But it very well could be in the near future. It's becoming a problem every day, a bigger problem. It's short-term rentals, and unfortunately, it will take me a little longer than five minutes. But I hope the time is well spent to bring an issue that I think is a planning commission issue. The way they handled it down in Colorado Springs, and I think you're the right forum to bring this up. Riding down to the golf course today, I ask a typical question to, I always ask questions when I'm in the go in the car heading to the golf course, and this one dealt with short-term rentals. I said, do you know what's going on in Woodland Park about short-term rentals? The answer was, what's that? Most people don't know what a short-term rental is. They know what a B and B is, Airbnb, VRBOs. There's other names for them. There's other forums that they ran and wonder, but had no clue. Said, well, do you know how many there are in Woodland Park? Is it a problem? The answer was, eh, there's maybe 10. Once he knew it was talking about B and Bs, maybe 10, okay? That's the problem. People don't know what's going on here. One of the early concerns with cities, towns, and hotels and the way the cities got into the middle of them was that they were not being licensed. They were not paying their hotel rental costs. So they were a competitor to hotels. But they, because they weren't paying their rental costs, they were an unfair competitor. So the cities nationwide started licensing them as businesses, even though they're in residential areas. They license them as businesses to get their income tax, so to speak, their sales tax. Just a short history. Most B and Bs started as a mom and pop operation where you had extra room in your house. You're empty nesters, you may have a shortage of money, so they started renting out these spaces in their house. Though, and they also, another driver was, an event would come to town. We have events here all the time. An event would come to town, the hotel space wasn't adequate. So people could rent their property, small part of their house or the whole house. And they could go on vacation with the money they made renting it, or they could actually pay their mortgage in one weekend by renting it for three or four days for an event. That was the way they started. Those are called homeowner occupied short-term rentals. Those are not really a big problem, because mom and pop lives there. Mom and pop knows the city, they know the town, they know the community, they know the neighborhood. That's not a problem, because they control them. The problem comes in when and what you understand, probably you not, you know, being collective, you understand short-term rentals are this type of short-term rentals, the way they started. That's not what's going on now. That was two to three years ago. If that's what you think a short-term rental is, you're thinking two, three years ago. What's changing now is that investors are moving in. They live 100 miles away, they live in another state, they may even live out of the country. They're buying a short, they're buying a property, and they're turning it into a short-term rental in your neighborhood. You may not even know about it. You may not know that two doors down is a short-term rental. You'll know it when you see four, 500 people a year, strangers in your neighborhood. So those are called non-homeowner occupied short-term rentals. And that's what's happening right here in Woodland Park, three doors down from me. Within the last three weeks, a house was bought. They're turning it into a short-term rental. They never planned to live there. They'll have four, 500 people in my neighborhood, two doors down, strangers, every one of them. And they live in North Denver. That's typical of what's going on. We also have another one that I didn't even know about. Another one licensed already. It's already on VRBO. And that's also a lady that lives in North Carolina. Those are two in my little, small neighborhood over by the golf course, within a few hundred feet of my house. These are a problem. If you do any kind of research at all, you'll find that non-homeowner occupied short-term rentals are a big growing problem in the nation. So let's talk about what goes on right here in Woodland Park. Sally doesn't like the word approvals, and I understand. But the question is, what approvals are required to operate an STR right here in Woodland Park? Does a neighborhood have a say-so? Does the adjacent homeowner have a say-so? What about a coveted neighborhood where they're not allowed by covenants? Well, here in Woodland Park, the process to get a license is not an approval process at all. It's just a rubber stamp to get a license so that Woodland Park gets the business tax. It's not an approval process. It's a rubber stamp. I call it rubber stamp license. If I want to get a, my house, I have a big enough house that I could rent the bottom out. No problem, I could do it. So how many STRs are already approved in Woodland Park? 10, like my friend thought. As are the 29th of July, there were 103. 103 already approved, already licensed, all right? You could literally have every adjacent home approved as an STR, and you would never have a say-so in it. You wouldn't even know about it. Are there any concerns here in Woodland Park about STRs? Well, yes, there are, and I'm hearing more and more as I talk. I'm connected to several hundred people. I'm a golfer, lots of connections. I hear more and more problems. 16 August 2021, a few days ago, on the Woodland Park next door Eagle Pines. Social media, I'm a little concerned this summer as opposed to last summer. As my exact location has a turnaround spot, so to say, but I'm seeing random cars that are actually speeding and coming to the turnaround frequently. I have children who sometimes ride their bikes, and I see other children do the same. I'm just a little concerned about the traffic of vehicles that don't seem to actually live here but still frequently show up, and especially concerned about the speed. What does that have to do with STRs? That's always a problem. Well, one of the replies. There are also more rentals like Airbnbs with strangers driving in and out of residential areas. Lots of noise late at night on Valley View. If I wanted to live down the street from a hotel, I'd have bought a house next to one. Aren't there any regulations? This was just a few days ago. What about strangers in the neighborhood? Four or 500 people a year, strangers. I have a service that deals with my credit rating. They provide information, they push information out to me whenever anything changes on my credit rating. Well, what does that have to do with STRs? Well, one of the things they push out are sex offenders. So if a sex offender moves into my neighborhood or anywhere in the whole Teller County area, I get it pushed out and their picture and everything else is right there in front of me, pushed to my phone. These four or 500 strangers renting STRs, there are absolutely no credit checks, no checks of any kind, nothing. You have no clue who's in your neighborhood now. Okay? I'll skip down since we are getting late. I think that's enough to show that we do have a problem that we're not doing much about. We find here. What is the industry saying about Woodland Park? The industry being the STR industry and the real estate industry. And we're talking about the investors for non-homeowner occupied STRs. Somebody buys a house and just never ever plans to be living here. The industry, in an article last month, says investors love short-term rentals because they yield high returns. However, neighbors detest them because of the increase in traffic noise and strangers who do not care about any long-term impacts they cause, coming and going all the time. This article notes correctly that long-term rental problems can be worked out over time. You have a neighbor that's renting their house beside you for a year or six months. Any problems can be worked out. Not so with short-term rentals. They're here today and gone tomorrow. By the time you solve a problem, you're talking about somebody else already beating the house. The article says Manitou Springs, probably the best opportunity for non-owner occupied short-term rentals in the area. Monument, an STR in Monument would certainly be more difficult to keep occupied, but it's not out of the question. Fountain, Fountain is currently looking to adopt the zoning rules for both tiny homes and short-term rentals in Colorado Springs. So they're telling the industry that Colorado Springs might not be such a good area because they have ordinances to control it, which I'll get to in a minute. Fountain is going to adopt them, so Fountain may not be, what do they say about Woodland Park? Well, they say Woodland Park has yet to institute rules around short-term rentals. So they are telling, the industry is telling the investors, Woodland Park is great. Come to Woodland Park and get your non-homeowner occupied short-term rental. That's what the industry is telling people. Why should we care about this at all? Well, there's another article in May of 2017, four years ago, that started identifying this problem. The short-term rental market is booming. Here's why shitty cities should regulate it. The bottom line in this article, four years ago, short-term rentals are no longer just a vacation destination issue. It's become such a big business that many cities and counties have begun to regulate the negative side effects such as noise, trash, parking, traffic problems, as well as serious, serious issues like the impact of short-term rentals on affordable housing and neighborhood character. Neighborhood character. Do we care about neighborhood character in Woodland Park? If you look at the envisioned plan that we're just going through, there are many areas where we care. Neighborhood character is a big issue. Just one example, I've got a whole bunch here, but I'll just give you one example. Go one action 115. In our envisioned plan that you are reviewing right now says maintain the overall integrity and character of Woodland Park neighborhoods. That's not what we're doing right now, because if you, again, read the industry articles, you'll find that the biggest, one of the biggest problems is that short-term rentals do not maintain the character of a neighborhood. You'll find that the biggest, one of the biggest problems is that short-term rentals do not maintain the character of a neighborhood. They totally change the character of a neighborhood. So the bottom line of these articles is that licensing STRs. Will clearly change the character of the community. Okay? So how can we control? STRs, I use that word directly, control STRs here in Woodland Park. We have an ordinance eighteen thirty-three, one-ten. That ordinance is the character of the neighborhood. That ordinance should have been used to stop this already. It says, uses shall not. Shall not involve any activity not in character with the majority of the uses in the neighborhood. Unless by design, setback, nature of operation, other devices, the character of the neighborhood will be maintained. What I think is that I could get my HOA lawyer and several HOA coveted areas together. And use that ordinance. To sue Woodland Park over what we've been doing. That's what I think, but I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. It also eighteen thirty-three, one-twenty, community welfare says uses shall not. Involve any activity which adversely affects the general welfare of the community. Clearly, STRs do that. They violate the general welfare of the community. There's also another potential problem with STRs in our ordinances. Eighteen oh-six-two-ten talks about the family. Okay, family means a group. Of not more than five persons excluding servants who have servants. Who need not be related by blood, marriage or adoption, living together in a dwelling unit. So we've decided that a short-term rental is just like a dwelling unit. It's not a business, it's in a residence, but it's like a dwelling unit, okay? So if you look out on VRBO right now, tonight, you'll find. Houses in Woodland Park in the city limits that are saying sleeps ten. Sleeps twelve and even sleeps sixteen. I'm sure they're family units related, but. They're sleep sixteen, right now advertised tonight. So I don't know if the city staff looked at these ordinances. And considered the character of the neighborhoods when they started licensing STRs. So what can we do about it? About five years ago or so, Colorado Springs identified this problem. Long time before we did, a long time before we had a problem. They identified it. In December of twenty nineteen, they finally, after going through all the big process, two-year battle. With investors and everybody else, they finally came up with an ordinance. That controls it. The ordinance is really good. It's something that we could use to go by. We don't have to start from scratch. We've got a ninety percent solution right there, ready to be put into our ordinances. It does several things. They're playing with it a little bit because it's been in place now for a while, so they're tweaking it some. So I might not have the absolute latest behind-the-scenes stuff going on. But basically, the way they control it is you have to have, it's, you have to live there. A hundred and eighty-five days out of the year. Which means the mom and pop ones are okay, the other ones are not. Okay, hundred and eighty-five days is magic. That makes you a Colorado resident. Okay, so that's a magic number. Another thing, you can't have two within five hundred feet. You can't license two within five hundred feet of each other. That's, to me, that's a little, a little close. I would like to see a thousand feet, but five hundred is a good start. Okay? Those are the type things that are in their ordinances to control this problem. All we have to do is adopt them, so. What am I asking as a bottom line for Woodland Park to do? I'm asking for. Four things. Okay? Number one. I would like for the planning commission to take ownership of what I call our STR invasion. And control it. Take ownership. Somebody needs to because this, to me, this can't just continue the way it is. It's not going to do anything to get worse. Okay, number two, as soon as possible, put a moratorium in place. To suspend any additional STR licenses for a one-year period while we get a handle of this. Okay? Number three, put together a task force led by the planning department or the planning commission. With the end product and ordinance. Similar to the one like Colorado Springs has, I'm perfectly good with that one. They've already vetted it through their legal and administrative process, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, it's there. It can easily be tweaked. Uh, what I, I just mentioned a couple of restrictions, they have other restrictions in there too. And the current license, there's always a problem with grandfathering things in. If you grandfather something in forever, nothing ever changes, not in my lifetime. So, but there's other ways to grandfather things in. You can grandfather something in for a year, two years. Give people time to adjust to the new reality. If you don't grandfather it in for any time, then you open yourself up for a lot of lawsuits. Licenses have to be renewed every year here, as I understand it, for an STR. So people know that it's only a one-year license. So grandfathered in for a year. You put the ordinance in place, grandfather in for a year, within a year, everybody knows the rules change. All right. Number four and the final one is adopt the goal to have the ordinance in place, no later than one January twenty twenty-two. I know it's gonna slip, but you've got a one-year moratorium for the slippage. And that's what I'm asking for tonight. Appreciate your time. Yeah. Okay.
I can decide that tonight.
Oh, I appreciate that. I'm not asking for any decisions tonight.
We can't because we're in work session.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, thank you though.
Okay. Sally, how do we currently regulate STRs, short-term rentals?
Uh, they are required to have a business license, as Mr. Penland explained. And they remit their sales tax and lodging tax to the city. The city has a software package which identifies. Uh, the short-term rentals and assists in getting them into compliance with the licensing. There are no zoning rules or regulations to require them to apply. Um, and meet certain standards.
One thing, I'm sorry, there's one thing I forgot to get that watered up. In the Colorado ordinance, they do restrict them from certain zone residential areas. That's another one of their restrictions.
Yeah. So it's an interesting topic. And I think really we need to test the waters with city council. And see what their desires are, because I would not want to have to work. With a task force that isn't endorsed by council. To make an effort on this and spend time and resources on it.
Amen.
I really don't think the city council will object because it's going to get more money and revenue for the city. And it's still going to go on.
Um, you also have to balance that with the resources that staff has to do in order to enforce. And process applications, so.
Any statistics about crime rates or any problems or accidents or any of that?
No, we've had two, maybe three possible in the past decade complaints about a short-term rental.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, there is Elizabeth Miller who would like to speak on the subject. Do you want to accept any?
You own some here.
So we do have some citizen listening in who has raised their hand, would like to say something. Would you like to hear from?
Name and serial number and you got five minutes. Okay, we're gonna get out of here. Go ahead.
Yes, versus Elizabeth Miller, this is Craig Miller.
Oh Craig, go ahead.
And I, I think the, what I agree with the comments that have been made. It's not the job of the planning commission to ask the city commission guidelines to how to proceed. I think you as volunteers, and we appreciate very much. Of your service and continuing service to. Bring to the city council. Comments from the community, and I think these are very, very pointed comments. All the way from tiny homes to SBRs. I just, I hope that you take the initiative to tell the city commission, these are the comments. And that's, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I have one last piece of information. Today, this morning, staff and the city attorney met with Logan Simpson. To begin the process of our code review. And so what we're doing is looking at unifying the zoning code. With the subdivision regulations and they've come up with a number of sections. And so we'll be rolling that out to you here in October.
Okay. We'll ask him to comment on that at the same time.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you so much for a long meeting. It was good.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry.